I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phil, if we have the real call, please.
Mayor Clint Folsom.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sandy Pennington.
Here.
Rita Dozel.
Here.
Sandy Hammerly.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Mark Laces.
Here.
Kevin Ryan.
Here.
Town manager Matt Bagley.
Here.
Kendra's not here. Town clerk Phyllis Harden here.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. This evening, we're here to talk about the community recreation center proposal. And we are going to allow for public comment during this meeting. Thought that kind of breaking up the meeting, we've got a three-hour meeting scheduled. I'm not sure if we'll need all of that time, but would like to offer the opportunity for public comment around the 7:30 hour. So allow people that, just for planning purposes, that's what we're going to allow. And we'd ask that during that time, if you'd like to make public comment, please limit it to three minutes of public comment instead of our usual five minutes. And that way, we just allow for more people to speak during that time. So, all right, with that, we'll go ahead and get into staff presentation.
Thanks, Mayor. Tonight, we have two items that we're hoping to get through with some input and direction from the board. The first is the phone survey questions. We have a set of draft questions that we provided to the board that we'd like to discuss. And we're hoping to get some resolution to these questions tonight because if we are able to do that, we'll be able to do the phone survey and have information back to you hopefully by August 20th meeting, if not by August 27th. So you'll have that information when you make your final determination on whether to move forward or not. It'd be a, I'll have Patrick come up and give more information on the questions themselves. But we are using the company that did the city of Lewisville's phone survey for their recreation question that they had two years ago now, I think it was. And we're hoping to get at least 400 respondents to this phone survey. So if we can agree on a set of questions, we think it'll be valuable information for the board. The second topic that we were planning to discuss tonight is starting to move towards whether, what type of combination or sales tax only or property tax only or combination thereof that the board is starting to think if we did move towards a ballot question, what you would like that to be. And Paul's provided some updated financial information that hopefully will help us in that discussion. So Patrick, why don't you come up and just go briefly over the questions and how we got to those and then.
Before we get into the questions, can I just ask a point of clarification? In terms of the 400 residents that we're going to be surveying, are we surveying both landlines and cell phones?
And I could follow up. I'm not exactly sure how they track down cellphone numbers, but they did say they'll do a response rate. You don't get to do an automated dial when using cellphones, but anymore with the lack of landlines, they know that they have to factor in a little bit of time to manually dial cellphone.
Are they going to track between landlines and cellphones?
You know, I think that, I don't know that I have the answer for that, but if that's something that we're interested in tracking, absolutely, I think.
I just think, you know, in this day and age, fewer and fewer people have landlines. And I think that you're probably going to reach more people representatively if you contact them with cellphones.
I would agree. I think landlines are going to skew the results. So that's a very important question to have answered.
So would the board like a split between landline and cellphone?
The professionals should understand this conundrum. So I'd like to hear from them how they intend to have a representative sample.
Okay.
That's the key. And if it's landline-based, it's not representative. There's a certain portion of the population that's more inclined to keep landlines.
Sure.
Right? So that then skews the sample.
And I wouldn't recommend to split it because I would defer to the experts who do this, you know, for their day job, that they understand this is what the demographics show, this is who's using a cellphone versus who's using a landline. I think also more people are prone to allow unknown numbers on their cellphones to go to voicemail. So, you know, I would keep that in mind as well because, you know, a lot of people won't answer their phone if they don't recognize the caller versus with a landline, they'll just pick up if the phone's ringing.
I guess I would just want to make sure that I'm giving them direction on what would be an unacceptable amount of landline use.
It has to be tracked. It has to be tracked if the phone is a landline, the phone upon which respondent is reached is a landline or a cellphone.
Okay.
But I think if they're pulling phone numbers off of voter registration, you can put whatever phone number you want on your voter registration, and it doesn't say whether it's a landline or cellphone. And a lot of times, when you call a number, you don't know whether you're getting a landline or cellphone. So I don't, I mean, maybe the question is where are you getting all these phone numbers from? And if it's just voter registration data, I don't know if we can track how to, how to get a number on cellphone versus landline. I mean, I think the point is, we just want to get people.
So Patrick, I, to reword this a little bit differently, I'm doubtful whether or not they have a mechanism to get to cellphones. I suspect it's closer to what Clint just said, is that they take the number off the voter registration, which may or may not be cellphone. If that's what they do, we got to be aware of that.
Sure.
Because a lot of times, the numbers given on your voter registration are ancient, right? And you have not updated them in decades. And they may be mostly landlines, and therefore, those people who have not updated them may not even have a landline anymore. We need to understand everything we can about those numbers.
I would, I think, just make a comment. I think what we're trying to avoid is selection bias. And if we are calling only people with landlines that are in the voter, I get that might create some selection bias. We've hired a nationally renowned firm. There are ways where they will undoubtedly purchase contact information and bump contact information so it's not just the exclusive phone number that we have. So I think instead of trying to direct somebody who knows how to do surveys a lot better than at least, I do. I'd suggest that we signal maybe that we are concerned about selection bias and we desire a confidence interval of, you know, well in excess of 90%, something in excess of 95%. But, you know, that's, what we're trying to avoid is selection bias, and I think there's, everybody would agree. I don't think that they would present us results that were terribly skewed.
And we don't need to micromanage it, but the point is, it's worth raising the issue now ahead of the survey company going forward, just so everybody's clear and we're not wasting money on a survey that ends up not being statistically valid.
It costs an extra $250 to get some additional phone information, let's spend that $250 to avoid the potential for selection.
Here's the reality. I have a lot of experience in this type of thing. As recently as the 2016 election, this issue was credited or blamed for a lot of the inaccurate survey work that was done to predict the outcome of that election. So that's 2016. We're not far removed from that. So it's incumbent on us to ask the right questions and understand the answers we're getting from them and for you to be able to convey back to us how this was handled.
And this company was fairly accurate in what their survey was for Lewisville's recreation question and what the outcome of the election was, was pretty close. So I think, staff's confident in their ability to give us information that.
Yeah. When the, when they call, will it show up on a, for example, on a cellphone, will it caller ID, who's calling? Do you know?
I'll have to follow up.
Yeah. That, that could make a huge difference because if people see it's a survey company and we've alerted them, then hopefully they'll, they'll answer the phone.
Okay.
So the listing of questions tonight is truly just a draft. The city, following kind of the board's direction, we reached out to the survey company that worked on behalf of the city of Lewisville, actually ended up with the same project manager. The questions that were used for the Lewisville survey were a little bit different in terms they were, they were trying to find thresholds of willingness to pay. Are you comfortable at this level? Yes or no? Depending upon that answer, that would be followed up with another question. And it was, it was significantly longer than, than what we have shown tonight. It was also generally mixed with a satisfaction survey for the entire city. They also had some other questions in there related to aquatics. So what we worked to do was just take a first pass, given the compressed timeline. Again, we're, we're now dealing with weeks. They, they did this well in advance. So I think that they were open to the idea of collecting a bunch of info and then filtering down from there. We took the approach for the draft of, of just throwing the question out there in terms of a willingness to pay with some level of specificity. So there's a handful of what we would call softer lead-in questions. There was some science behind. You definitely don't want to just call and say, are you aware of this? Okay, great. Yes, no? Are you willing to pay for it? Yes, no? So a little bit of the formatting is a softer lead-in, about fourth or fifth question. You kind of get down to the point, and then you follow it up with some demographic questions as more of a softer exit. Staff tonight is looking for specific direction on what information the board wants to gain from this process. And if I think we have an understanding of that, we can follow up with the survey company to craft some great questions and hopefully produce the results that you guys are all interested in hearing. So with that, I don't know if it makes sense to, to start with question one and kind of just work our way down, but generally, I'm trying to gain a sense of what do we want this mechanism to serve and how can we accomplish that as quickly as possible, knowing that we're on a shortened timeline?
So I'm happy to start as, I'm looking presumably to start. So Patrick, could you go to the top of the survey?
Sure.
Show it on the screen. So the goal in everything I say is going to be that this survey has to be as short and sweet as possible. We have to ask the questions that we want to ask. We've got to ask them as succinctly as possible, and we've got to get off the phone. If this, as you know, when you take a survey on the phone, if it seems like it's going to drag on, you're not interested in doing it. So short and sweet is the key. So number one, may I speak with Patrick Hammer, right? Patrick comes on the phone. The next thing, you need to introduce the reason for calling. This is such and such survey calling on behalf of the town of Superior. The town of Superior is considering a November ballot issue to construct and operate a community center attached to the Superior Sports Stable that includes fitness, period, right? So you assert that. You don't ask, are you aware, dah dah dah, because that doesn't get you any further towards the information because you're not really measuring their awareness at this point. You're getting to sensitivity about the two different financing options and their willingness to join this, right? And put their money into it, right? So you got to get to those questions as quickly as possible. So that, would you say you've heard nothing, only little, some, or a lot? I would X out because it doesn't matter to what I want to know. How do you feel about your current property taxes? I would X out because it doesn't get you where you want to go. I would go straight down to what you've got. Well, I've got to go back one. This is Patrick Ham, is this Patrick Hammer? Yes. You say, I'm calling on behalf of town of Superior. Then you go back to your very first question, your number two. Let me confirm your address as, right? Because somebody's reading off the voter rolls, and you're just confirming the address, right? Is your address still XYZ town of Superior, right? And if they say yes, good, you're good to go. If they say no, I've moved to Arvada, you would say, well, thank you. You need to be a resident of town of Superior. And then you go on to the next one, right? You end the survey at that point. So you go to number five and pose the, the financing option number one. Okay. And then you go to option, the next one is number six, the financing option there. And I could spend a little more time on him, but I'm just trying to give you the overall format that I think is advised here. Then if you go to the next page, D1, tell me if any members of your house will currently use each of the following facilities. What about Lifetime? What about Lewisville Recreation Center? What about City of Boulder Recreation Facilities? And you must have a D there. Any other, right?
Impact Sports.
Yeah. Any other. Or you could do D, Impact Sports, E, any other. Okay? Okay. Now, I'm going to have you tell me, after that one, I would say you have to go into a question that says, for, for these people who are members of others, the real question I want to get at is are they inclined to add a town of Superior Rec Center membership? Or are they inclined to, I mean, are they going to belong to Lifetime and the town of Superior? Are they going to cancel Lifetime to join the town of Superior? Or have they know, and are they not going to join town of Superior at all, right? Because that's what's key to our financing model, is these user fees, right? So that has to be added, a question of that effect needs to be added. But what that implies is something like, add a monthly membership rate of XX for individuals and XX for families. Will you be inclined to continue your Lifetime Fitness membership and join the town of Superior Rec Center? Inclined to cancel, you, somehow you have to get that membership in there. I haven't worded the question, obviously. You have to get that. Will they join the town of Superior Rec Center, right? Or will they not? Will they just only stay at Lifetime or only stay at Lewisville Rec? Then you're going to have to tell me the significance of why we're asking D2 and D3. To me, it doesn't matter because we just want to get, are they inclined to, are they, which financing option? And are they inclined to join this rec center?
Sure.
Okay? So.
And I, my understanding is they're largely what they were calling soft exit questions, so you didn't end it on a.
But they still have to have value.
Sure. So if we'd like to come up with something different, I think we can add in. It sounds like we'll, at a minimum, be adding in two additional questions. So maybe we eliminate D2, three, and potentially four.
Yeah. I don't care how old they, I don't necessarily care how old they are. I might care somewhat about D2 if you're trying to get at childcare needs, but then you have to be much more discreet about, I mean, you have to have those ages in more discreet ranges, like do you have children under five? Do you have teenagers? Do you have whatever, that kind of thing? If you're trying to get at potential use of a teen amenity, potential use of a senior amenity, potential use of a childcare amenity, you then would have to ask your age question differently. So I'm going to, I'll let other people go. I just wanted to sort of start this out with the important things to me is the financing options, which, which one has the most appeal? And then the current membership. And would that go ahead for someone else?
Okay.
Just, thanks and good comments, Sandy. I think a couple of questions are helpful as we parse the data to understand. And so I do think it's valuable, for example, question number three, would you say you've heard nothing, a little, some, or a lot? I think that is an important question. I don't really care. I'll leave the sequencing of that question to the experts, but I think that's helpful. So somebody that's heard nothing about this, that does not support it, is a helpful data point for me to know, for example, that, you know, two-thirds of the people that are responding to the survey have heard little about this. That, to me, is impactful, and it, assuming we go forward, would change the way we might continue to engage the community. So I think it's not just a question, but I get the, the key question is, would you support the tax increase? Is this a good idea or not? That's the key question. But we have some other questions that we just need to ask to better understand the responses. And if, at the result, let's assume we go forward with the survey, which we'll make that decision, and then let's assume that we, we get the responses to the surveys, but it's overwhelming, we don't like this. There's still data that will be useful, even if we decide to not go forward with the data. There's still a lot of data that would be useful. And some of, a couple of the questions that you proposed in the leading may unintentionally remove some of that usefulness from the data. So I just want to be really thoughtful about what we remove. I agree, D3 is a complete waste, in my view, maybe somebody convinced, how long have you lived here? I don't think it's particularly helpful. But absolutely, like D2 is very helpful to me. Does your household include any of the following? We probably have that demographic available to us, but I think a better question would, you know, would you use this? I don't know what the question is, but would you intend on using this for your kids? Would you intend on, as a over 65 senior center type of facility? So I think some of those questions, even though they're not obvious questions, like we care about the responses, but we care about the type of people, those responses, and then whether or not they were supportive or unsupportive of the tax increase or not. And absolutely, the question about a membership was just amiss. I think we need to, that's, to me, key because a significant amount of the revenue isn't just going to come from the tax increase, and it's going to operate at a loss, but we are projecting some pretty significant revenue on the membership perspective. So that's key data that we got to ask. We got to get some membership questions in there.
Kevin and Sandy, just a quick question, because I don't want to lose this thought. How far, how much detail do you go into about memberships, then? Are you going to ask them, are they going to do the bronze, silver, or gold? And what that means? Because that can open up a whole bunch of other questions that I think we could get too far into this. I think we could be asking too much and getting too much data that we don't really need. So I don't know if, if I were, if I were receiving the call and somebody asked me if I would be changing my membership over, I might be interested in having a mill levy increase and a sales tax increase, but I don't know if I'm going to change my membership over it because I don't know what the cost is going to be.
But I, I mean, I, I looked at the Lewisville survey last year when we were talking about some other surveys, and that really was well done. And I agree, the intent of that Lewisville survey was the, was they were trying to titrate on how much somebody would pay, both from the, on the membership as well as the sales tax. So I think they, they kind of figured it out from a science perspective. I think ours was a little more complicated because there are some, some, there's some tiering there. And I don't think we need to over-describe in a survey what we need, what we mean by the gold or premier level membership. But I think having some basic questions of, how much would you be willing to pay? And for basic service, for enhanced service that include aquatics, and a super-enhanced service that included some amenities from the sports stable? And maybe just keep it at that. Because it is, it is important data that I think we need to have from a revenue projection standpoint.
So I think we've heard some really good points from all three of you. To me, when I've been talking to residents and my non-scientific, like anecdotal questions that I've been asking are three questions, right? The first question is, should we send this question to the voters? And everybody would say, yes, we want to have the option to vote on this. And then I ask, would you vote for it? Would you support it if we sent it to the voters? And then everybody was unanimous and said, yes, absolutely. And I said, okay, would you use it? And then I started hearing crickets. And I started hearing people that were equivocal. And that's what really concerns me because I don't want to send something to the voters. I don't want the voters to pass on something that ends up not being desirable and ends up not being, you know, the right fit. So I think, you know, into Sandy's questions, you know, I think what we need to do is ask, if we built this facility, would you cancel Lifetime, right? Would you cancel whatever your other option is for getting these types of services? If we built it, you know, will you come? You know, if the costs were the same, would you choose this over your existing choice? And then for the people who don't have an existing membership, would you actually join our rec center if you're not already a Lewisville member or a Lifetime member? And then in terms of, you know, the pricing, I agree, we can get lost in the weeds if we go too far into, you know, bronze, silver, gold. But I think giving some sort of ballpark threshold, would you pay $75 a month for an individual membership that would get you, you know, parity with what you can get at Lewisville or Lifetime? You know, some, something like that. As a family, would you pay 180 a month? Whatever, whatever we decide. But there needs to be some simple, you know, kind of price point that people can use as a means to compare against either the choice that they're making right now to, to buy the services from somebody else, or the price that they would pay to buy something that they're not already buying. But I think, you know, we need to have that information because if we don't get a good feel from the public that they're actually going to use this, then I think we're, we're missing a tremendous opportunity here to actually take the pulse of not whether or not this is going to pass in November, because that's not what this survey in my mind is. You know, the key question is, would you support a tax increase? Yes, that's one key question. The other key question is, are you going to use it? Because I don't want people to build this thing. I don't want the voters to fund it if it ends up not being competitive with Lewisville or Lifetime and not used. So I think that it is absolutely critical that we ask those kind of grounding questions of, do you currently have a membership somewhere else? of, do you currently have a membership somewhere else? Would you cancel it for this? And if you don't have a membership somewhere else, would you pay X for an individual? Would you pay Y for a family?
Well, and there's a third option. You may continue your membership at Lifetime and add this in on top of it, you know? So that's a valid response as well. There will be that part of the population. For example, myself, I'd keep mine, but if my rate here is reasonable, I'd probably join it as well. Right? Because I did get different things. And this question has come up before. We have to be prepared to answer the question. This came up in caps. If you just wanna use, and Rita's brought it up countless times, if you're just gonna use the community center portion, do you have to pay that monthly use fee? If you're gonna just come in and use the, let's say, the digital library or the teen center, do you have to pay as if you're using the exercise equipment? And I don't know that. What is the answer to that? What's the model say?
It's been our take from the GGO that for general use of something like a digital library, you would just be able to come in and access, much like you would at another facility. I mean, it is fairly common to participate in separate programs or activities and not actually have a a membership card. We were focusing almost primarily on active, like you'd buy a monthly membership.
So we would have to be prepared. The person who's executing this, asking you the question, needs to have that in the script to answer that question. Because Rita may say, yes, I would like to come and use only the community center.
Right.
Portion.
Great.
Yeah, and I don't even wanna confuse it by saying digital library, because we've never defined this as a digital library, so let's not add another definition to this if we can. My comments are very much aligned with everybody who has been saying, and we must ask the question, will you use it? Not only will you pay for it, but will you use it? And pay to use it, you know, to actually come and buy a membership to to use it. And the question, then, about how much you would pay, I think, are three questions. We have three funding options. All sales tax, this much. All property tax, 7.2 mils or 7.1 mils, and it's gonna cost this much for a household or for for business. And the other one is a combination of the two. So I think that that is the funding question has to be, there's three ways we could pay for. Sales tax, property tax, or a combination of the two. And I think we need to describe that and and help people understand how those money's gonna be derived, those revenues, and then how they pay for the financing of it, as well as the operating costs of it. Because that's two pieces as well. The other thing I don't like is the word attached to the sports stable. I don't think it's attached to the sports stable. It's beside the sports table. You know, it's good to tell the location, but it's not attached to, because then it implies that you're gonna be able to use a sports table and the community center. It's all part of one complex. So I think we just have to describe that a little bit better. Use a sports table stable as a way to say where it's gonna be proposed to be located, but not leave the connotation that you get to use a sports table because it's there at the the community center is there. And I and I kind of have a problem with saying community center and indoor pool. I think we should have to describe the indoor pool a little bit, just give a couple of words. Eight lap lanes and a splash pool or something like that. Because when you say indoor pool, people come up with all kinds of fantastic visions in their heads of what that is going to be. So let's set the expectations right from the start. So we have three levels, you know, eight lap lanes and a splash pool on the first level, two basketball courts on the second level, or whatever it ends up being, and a community space and other whatever on the third level. And help people understand that. Then ask them the question, if these amenities will cost some $20 million, and this is how we would propose funding them, and then you have the three options. One would be all sales tax, again, all property tax, or a combination of both. And are you interested in that? Then ask the question again, are you going to move or are you going to buy into this membership? And and I think the that would make a good survey for asking people. And I also agree, we don't need to ask them how long they've lived there. That's not important to me, because you're gonna pay no matter if you lived here one year or 22, 21 years, you know? So you're gonna pay the same, and it really doesn't add value to the comments that are there.
That's real quick, before we progress, I just wanna circle back around. So we had an earlier statement of remove question number three and number four. We had a comment about potentially keeping question number three and rewording. I'd like to circle back around and make sure that we're all on the same page with that. And then I also had noted a quick comment of initially, we wanted to say connected to, but we're saying maybe next to is a more appropriate word.
Adjacent.
Yeah, I would say.
In front of.
Between or, you know, by. Adjacent to or.
Adjacent to.
Yeah, whatever, but not connected to. That adds too much to the expectations that people might have. I don't think that about the property taxes, what they say about property taxes is a of interest in this survey. I do like what Kevin is saying. You can find out from the ongoing, you know, the following answers, maybe to kind of get a feel for if they've heard nothing about it and they still are interested. I find that of value to know that. Or if they've heard a lot about it and are interested or not interested, it's kind of it may it may not have any impact on how we move forward, but it just would be an interesting question to ask.
Yeah, I'm definitely on board with keeping three for for those reasons as well. And you've gotta start with something softer than than how much do you wanna pay? So we've gotta we've gotta get a baseline of of understanding.
So we'll go ahead and there's agreement. Question number four will be completely removed, and we'll keep question.
Patrick, why in number five do you have 15 when we know it's gonna be? Why wouldn't we just say 15's low?
20.
20.
Sure.
Well, is but is that the isn't? I thought there's a $3 million contingency.
There is. There's.
So I think having that range is important.
What $3 million contingency?
19 has a $3 million contingency. 19 million has three that includes a $3 million contingency. So 16 million's the estimated cost, with a $3 million contingency brings it to 19.
There was also a little bit of play in there.
What number is should be the number?
Well, but we don't know if we're gonna spend 19. I'm sorry, Patrick. But I think that having that range, okay, put 16 then, 16 to 20 million.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you. I'm saying that whatever the number is, it'll be the number that's in the survey. So, you know, instead of equivocating or waffling a little bit, whatever the number is, that we're saying that we're gonna have to go get bonds or money for it. That's what.
I think we've gotta have a range. I mean, at this stage in the thing, you've gotta have a range.
That's the actual range.
Well, so just a, you know, we held the public engagement meeting, and there was obviously some great comments about the facility. We actually don't know what this facility looks like. We don't know if it's two courts. We don't know if it's one court. We don't know if it's eight lap lanes. We don't know if it's three lap lanes. So in conversations early on about the questions, this was a recommendation made by the survey company. And going back, you know, our original intent was to have the amenities finalized early on in the process. So I think that we're probably gonna have to use some rangy language because we still have some uncertainty on what this facility actually looks like.
What I don't want to see us do is have a low end that is is totally way too low just to, because again, that gives us false information. Let's just be accurate in the range.
What do people think, though, Bob? I think we should give the three funding options. All sales tax, all.
I agree.
Property, or a combination. Because we don't have the we don't have three here right now. We just have two.
So related to that, I had asked Paul if we were to 100% pay the cost of the loan with a mill rate, because that's that's basically what Louisville did. When they went back, when they were planning theirs, they agreed upfront that the construction costs, basically the amount of their loan, would be paid back through their mill rate. And so I asked Paul, I said, okay, if we were to just use a mill to pay back this loan, what would the rate be? And he said 7.1, correct? I just wanna confirm that that is that's what you told me. So I just wanna make sure that if that 1.665 would be 7.1 mils per year.
Paul Mills, Town Staff, have provided a lot of different information to a lot of different folks, but I off the top of my head, I that information sounds correct.
That does I just wanna make sure that what I so I just wanna make sure that we understand that that is what it would cost just to pay the loan.
And I I think I'm a little.
And I'm not saying that's that would but that's what it would cost to pay the loan. We would have to make a decision whether we want to go five. But if you're going 1.5 against 7.1, that seems a little low on your mills.
So Paul, does to that, does 7.1 only cover the the bond financing and not the operations? Yeah, I first time I've heard 7.1.
So, you know, just to be frank, this was a very specific question, taken really out of context when you're talking about the entire financing of the project. I mean, the very specific question of what the property tax rate would be to cover the debt is that particular amount. But that's not how we're looking at the financing. The financing is a myriad of new potential tax revenue sources plus.
I'm having trouble hearing you. So, okay.
So briefly, the Information Trustee Hammerly had requested, was very specific to the loan, but and what property tax would need to need to be raised to just cover the loan. But that's not how we're looking at the financing for for this particular project. It's a much more complex situation where we're looking at a number of revenue sources, new tax revenues, membership revenues, things of that nature, and a number of new expenses, operating expenses, as well as debt service expenses. So it's it's, I think, interesting information, but I would say it's perhaps a little bit out of context when we're looking at overall financing.
But just to be clear, at 7.1 mils, you still need a user fee to cover operating costs.
See, and now we're getting away from from the norm. I mean, the information provided in your packet talked about the tax rates needed holistically, new tax rates plus membership revenues to fund this particular operation. The worst-case scenario, if it was property tax only, it was a five-mill increase. So I've got 1.1 million generated from that five mils. I have quite a bit of revenue generated from user fee, from dedicated revenue sources from the Rough Riders Sports Club, and that collectively pays for all the expenses, including the debt service expenses.
I'm I'm a little hesitant to put this property tax only question on the on the survey, because I don't think we're ultimately gonna choose it. It's just too high of a number. We have a very different sales tax picture than Louisville did, and that's why we get so much from we get so much mileage from our sales tax versus our property tax. We don't have the commercial base that Louisville does, so those are those are all big differences. I mean, we're also not putting on the question, you know, the user fee only. You know, we could fund it by user fee only, and we're not putting that question on there because we would never it would never fly. So neither would neither would property tax only. So I don't, I mean, to your point of keeping it short, let's do keep it short and keep it to things that we might actually choose, which is sales tax only or a combination. I just don't see any other thing that's close to being realistic, so why do we why do we go down that path?
Well, yeah, I was only trying to give some context of what that loan repayment alone would cost, particularly when you can look at the data that was gathered by Louisville, which did not include their did not include in there any of their operating expenses, the cost of repaying the loan. And they are all they, and everybody around us was running into deficit. So I just wanted to make it clear that the 1.5, yeah, might work if we say we're gonna get $603,000 from Rough Riders. But I think before we can say we're going forward with a certain mill rate, we gotta decide whether we really want another organization taking up 50% of the open hours of the of the facility. So it's a little hard for me to put in a number that talks about one or the other without us first having the discussion of, do we wanna consider that Rough Riders $603,000 subsidy? Because that does impact, that could impact our mills. Personally, I would rather see us take out that subsidy and we make it up in mills.
Well, and Sandy raised a good point a couple of meetings ago. Somehow, we've arrived at the combo proposed, or on the table at least, 0.25 sales tax and 1.5 mils. So I think Sandy said, well, why don't we have like 0.15 mils of sales tax, 1.15% sales tax and three mils? So that was a different combo that actually intrigued me. So it's not five, it's still a combo, but it's not as low as the 0.25 and 1.5 mils. So I I'd like I don't I'm putting that back out there on the table. So I I agree with the comment that we need to discuss this further, and if we arrive at two options that we are pretty keen on, either this or that, then you put the two options in, right? And only the two options. But if there remains at the end of the conversation, three options, because the board has different opinions on this, then we put three options in there. I wouldn't go any more than three. But we could do all sales tax, we could do five, and we could arrive at the middle that is like 0.15 on sales tax and three on mills. That that could be a valid place we arrive at. But I agree, we have to sit here and talk about a considerable number of hours and a considerable lease revenue, and whether or not we're all seeing that happening, because I don't see that happening. I I think at a $20 million facility, our residents should expect and should be guaranteed primary access whenever they wanna go there and not play second fiddle to somebody else leasing a significant amount of space during prime time. So we have to have that discussion in my mind.
Thanks. Yeah, that's so two of the questions that I had. One was Rough Riders and any other user groups that are gonna be using them? What are the times that they would be using, times of the day? So I think we need to be clear on that as well. But we're really only looking at two different options. I know there's multiple variables of the financing options here, but are there isn't there any others that we've explored or thought about? Like, what about retiring debt that we have coming up? Do we have some debt that's gonna be retired that maybe those sales tax revenues can be used towards this? Or is there anything else? Why do we have to settle for just sales tax moving forward or property taxes?
I mean, we have debt expiring in 2022 with the marketplace that's gonna have additional revenue flowing to the general fund in the in 1 to 2 million dollars per year that could be used to help pay for this facility. But if that were the direction the board would wanna go, we would need to maybe wait to proceed with the project, because that's still three years away. The districts two and three in Rock Creek, that five mils is going away, but that can't be repurposed, because that was for debt debt reduction only. So primary revenue would be something that you need to be voted on by residents.
Okay. Because we've we've taken funds from various accounts to pay for parks, and we've said that we'll pay these funds, for instance, open space. We've used open space funds to build Wildflower Park, and we said we'll pay open space back over a period of two or three years or whatever it might be. I mean, is that another option that we should consider?
Those are more of your one-time projects that, you know, are paid back over a three to five year. This is gonna be an ongoing cost to the town. This is going to be an ongoing cost to the town, you know, for the next twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. So you want to, you, you would, it'd be preferable to have a dedicated revenue source just for that facility. Now, you could go back and ask the voters to repurpose or use some of the open space tax the board wanted to, but.
So we're kind of getting away from the survey. Can we close out the survey or are there other surveys?
That was one of the reasons why I was asking that question because if, if we do come up with an alternative way to finance this, then that changes the survey a little bit. So I mean, I'm happy to, to close this out, but if we change anything, then we've got to go back to the survey and make sure it gets modified.
Well, again, I think these questions are important part of the survey because all we're talking about here is.
Thank you. Because all we're talking about is sales tax here, and we're not talking about what this might mean from personal property taxes or from property taxes. And so if we don't add a question that somehow discusses, you know, are you comfortable with a three mill tax increase that would mean this much on a house of, we're not doing ourselves any justice because if we then put into place a prop, or a property tax, and we haven't asked our folks about it.
Number six does get into the combo.
Well, but, but she's saying not a combo, it's take out and just.
Well, it, I mean, it could be a combo or it couldn't. I mean, because we could just say, we're going to put in a five percent personal property tax because we're like the city of Lewisville.
Five mills.
Or five mills because the city of Lewisville believed that the construction costs should be paid for by the residents and, and the, and the businesses that were in Lewisville. Now, Lewisville's a little bit different because they have far more commercial tax than we do. So that helps them a lot. I, I think Paul said about seventy-three percent of our personal property or our property taxes come out of residential, and that's not the case. But I just don't want us to not see property tax, or at least a significant part of property tax, because if this is truly a facility for our residents, then hopefully they want to pay for it.
Hey, Matt, quick, quick question on.
I'm sorry.
On property taxes, funding this. With TIF in the, in the town center, does that mean that they wouldn't be, that any of the town center properties wouldn't be paying any property taxes towards this?
Any new property taxes the town passes, the voters pass, it, any properties over there would pay that?
They would pay.
And it would come to the town.
Okay, okay.
That's good to know.
Okay, Kevin.
I think there's another way to skin this cat on this question. I didn't write it down, so let me see if I can, but I, I think there needs to be an introduction of this question is that acknowledgement that there's going to need to be some net new revenue source, some net taxes that are going to come due. And then asking the, the survey question of acknowledging that there's going to need to be some increase, we'd like you to, to weigh your tolerance on the following. Number one, a exclusive increase of sales tax up to point three, five percent from no tolerance to very tolerant. Number two, an exclusive increase of sales tax to up to, you know, point three, five, zero tolerance or no tolerance. Or the third, a combination thereof, which would be somewhere between point two, five and a one point five property tax mill levy, zero tolerance. Right, you know, but you know where I'm going. And then, so it's the introductory question, and then three sort of sub-questions underneath where you're getting no tolerance, where you're getting, you know, strong support to strong opposed around those three. And I think that might, because we're, we're not, we don't have to decide whether or not it's point two, five, point three, point oh, two, five, or we don't need to decide that. It's what we're trying to do again is take the pulse of the community on their tolerance for this. And then I guess the fourth question would be, you know, the fourth sub-bolt on that would be, you know, hell no. I, I have no tolerance for either of these increases or the combination thereof. And then I, you know, of those, I'd like to.
But do we, do we think that we're really, and, and maybe I'm just, you know, not seeing this right, but if somebody called me out of the blue and asked if I wanted to pay point two, five percent more in sales tax, you know, the number isn't necessarily, when we're talking about point two, five versus point three, five, you know, that to me is not necessarily a data point that's really valuable. The question is, would I be willing to pay any sales tax more or not, right? It's just a binary choice. And same thing with, with property taxes, would I be interested in increasing my property taxes? You know, some, you know, reasonable, right?
Right, I think it's a good point, Mark, which is why I was trying to get some, you know, strongly opposed to strongly support, to, to support versus opposed. So on each of those three, on each one of those three, three options. I mean, I, I think the best option is the combination thereof, the combination between the two. But I don't know, which is, and I don't think any of us know, which is why we wanted to push out the phone.
Kevin, what yours does though, it, we really are the most knowledgeable about towns finances, hopefully, having served up here for either a long time or.
Next to Paul.
A moderate time, I mean, elected. Paul's most, Matt, you know, Steph. But the fact is, when you say, would you pay, prefer sales tax up to point three, five? Or would you prefer property tax up to five mills or a combination in the middle? The fact is, what they say may not be good policy from the elected leaders.
Of course.
So let's say they all say, oh, yeah, I'd prefer point three, five sales tax, right? The fact is, I know several of us up here can't support that, right? So while that's an interesting question, given the sensitivity to the time it takes to, to do a, a survey, meaning what I ask when somebody calls me, other than basic, you know, politically affiliated, you know, I like issue surveys, is how long, how many questions are there and how long is it going to take? And hopefully they say there are six or seven questions and it's going to take five minutes. And I'm much more inclined to sit through it, right? So we've got to be very concise about our questions. Otherwise, people will opt out because they don't want, especially in the middle of summer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I still, while that is interesting information, it doesn't get to the crux. The crux is when we sit here and discuss in phase two of this meeting, are we going to allow any of these lease, this projected lease payment from Rough Riders to be used in the financial equation at this point, at this number of hours a week, right? So I need to know that so I can then go back and I can, as an elected leader, say, I believe the two best options to put on here from a financing alternative are this percent sales tax, this percent combo, and I might opt for this percent property tax only, yet to be decided. But also, remember in all of this, the fee has to be, the, you, the person who's taking this has to understand it's going to be part sales or property tax and also a fee, right? So we got to, got to make that clear. So while I think what you're saying is interesting, that just shows their preference. And we in fact may have to ignore their preference entirely, for example, point three, five sales tax, just because it doesn't agree with what we consider to be good policy from a policymaking perspective. So I would probably not do it that way on that, even though it might yield a little bit of interesting information.
I had written down, I think, Paul, maybe you can help me see if this was right. I, I know the all sales tax is zero point three, five percent, right? And, and that would fund the financing of the up six, seventeen to twenty million dollars. And then also we get members fees and some lease revenue to fund the whole project. So when we say all sales tax, I think it says here that we're raising approximately fifteen to twenty million to construct. Would zero point three, five percent sales tax increase doesn't raise fifteen to twenty million dollars?
Did you just say it does not?
Well, it says here it does, is that right? So answer the question, I guess, zero point three, five percent in number five, it says zero point three, five percent sales tax to raise approximately fifteen to twenty million dollars. Does zero point three, five percent raise fifteen to twenty million dollars?
It doesn't. I think the question or at the end says it will help fund a portion of.
Okay, so we take out that raise approximately, just say zero point three, five to construct and then help fund a portion of the operating costs of this community, proposed community center. Okay, so that's the all sales tax option. Then the all mills option would be, I think you, I heard you say five mills plus member fees plus leasing revenue.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the, the comparable mills, not seven mills, but five mills. And then the other is a combination of the two, one point five, which is in here, plus sales tax zero point two, five percent, plus lease revenue and member fees. Correct? So those are the three options, there's all sales tax.
But they, but they all depend on the six hundred and three thousand.
Well, that's why I said, plus member fee plus lease revenues.
Yeah.
You don't have to say the amount, but I think it would be good to describe that. I, I'm, you know, I know not everybody's number numbies like some of us are up here, but I would want to know that. I'd rip this person apart when they were giving me these options and I'd be asking questions that they couldn't answer. So I think if we were a little clearer, I still don't mind doing the options. All sales tax, this much, this is how much it would be for a hundred dollars, I like that, everybody gets that. And then five mills is all property tax plus the member fees plus the lease fees, you know, could fund this project, or a combination of the two. And then let people say what they think. I don't think those are too difficult of questions, T O O, difficult, not T W O. I don't think they're very difficult questions for people if you don't get too complicated in the length of the question. All sales tax, this much, all pro, mills, five, or a combination of the two.
And related to that, I think what bothers me a little bit is that I see a disproportionate percentage of the revenue coming out of sales tax compared to what's coming, what's projected to come out of mills. Because we're seeing eight hundred and twenty-three thousand in sales tax and three hundred and fifty-one coming from mills. I'd feel better if we were somehow getting those two closer to each other. So the total there is eleven, is a hundred, one point one million. So maybe the amount of sales tax comes down to six hundred or five fifty, and the mill comes up because then that also decreases our risk should one of those two go south on us. So particularly, you know, suppose, I mean, you know, think the worst, something happened with sales tax. Then the problem becomes for us, we got to make up the difference out of the general fund. So if we had a little bit more even risk on the combined option, that would make me more comfortable.
What I might propose here, we've got general agreement with some of this, but we need to have another conversation. And then we need, I think, come back to numbers five and six. We need to have this other conversation to see where the board falls on lease revenue and the hours that are imputed in the, the spreadsheets here. So I'd actually like to have that conversation because it's going to determine where I fall on these numbers in five and six and possibly the all property tax option. So is, how do others feel?
Let's, let's do that.
One more question from Matt on the mill levies. You have the charts in here that show the comparisons of various municipalities and how we would rank if we raised it by five mills or what have you, but that doesn't include everything, right? So if you include the fire department and all that, I mean, we're.
No, that's, that's just town mill levy, yep.
So if you, let's look at Lewisville, for example. I mean, that's not all under the, the five mill increase. You show them at eight point eight, six, nine. What else, what other mill levies do they have that's?
Oh, similar to us. I mean, they have, they have a fire district mill levy, they have the school district, they have the county mill levy. I think there's a, uh, not a library fee, but a arts district fee in there, so I mean.
So do you mean the total?
Yeah, so I'm wondering is.
For example, like what would the total be in Lewisville, what would the total tax rate be?
Yeah, right now it makes us look.
Lafayette.
Five mill makes us look pretty.
We'll be similar to Lewisville in every aspect except for the fire district.
So total mill, everything included.
And they have the, the mill levy for their recreation expansion.
That's right. So what, what, what is that? What is their total mill levy? I mean, if you add it all together.
Off the top of your head, Paul? I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
So as Matt said, really, the only difference is in fire district. Their fire district is about seven mills, our fire district is, is about twenty mills, so thirteen mills difference.
But what is their total property tax?
What's our total mill levy?
Our total, well, it depends where you live, but as soon as districts two and three go away with the, with the current mill levies, it's about one oh, one. Their mill levy would be thirteen, Lewisville's mill levy would be thirteen less than that because of fire district.
And then you, if you add it, if we increase five, then it would be eighteen different.
Correct, yep.
So is Lewisville's increase for their rec center addition in this or not in this?
It is included, yes. Those are, those are current property tax rates. And out of those seven municipalities, four have fire districts and three have fire departments within their municipality.
But Paul, did you say that's minus district two and three?
The one oh, one number.
One oh, one. So at the end of this year.
What is it now?
One oh, six.
Okay.
At the end of the year, five percent decrease because two and three are going away, down to one oh, one.
All right, let's go ahead and have this lease revenue discussion. And I'd like to target getting through that and maybe wrap up the survey questions and then do public comments until at seven thirty. Sandy, you want to start?
Me?
Yes.
Well, short and simple of it is Rita said something interesting that was different than I have come to believe this project, so I wanted to have that clarified. At one point, I thought this project, my, my authorization in April at that retreat to go forward with this and put it on the ballot was with an understanding that now we were at a pretty much a standalone Town of Superior rec slash community center. And then subsequently, I thought I was corrected in that belief to say that it's totally still dependent on this use of the ability of a subscriber, what, what do you call it, somebody who, a member of the Town of Superior Rec Center to use these amenities over at Sports Stable. So I need to have that clarified. Is this a standalone Town of Superior Rec Center? Or are we still in this quasi-partnership for these additional amenities, et cetera? So I need to have that clarified. Then point two is, I am very uncomfortable with the financials that depend for so, such a considerable number of hours of use of entities outside our superior residence to make the financials work. So I prefer to have the standalone where we get this thing started. We see where the, the excess space and time are, and we make a decision at a future point in time whether or not there's a potential. whether or not there's a potential lease ability here to outside interests. But to go into it presuming it only works if we have that upfront, I'm less comfortable with. Either this is a Town of Superior Rec Center slash Community Center for the residents of Superior first and foremost, or it's not. And I'm on board possibly, depending how everything else shakes out with, I'm certainly more on board with the first one than with the second one. So I need clarity on what is this really in terms of a business relationship and reliance on existing Sports Stable amenities? And then the other one, if we pull out and make this really truly first and foremost Town of Superior, what does that do to the financial equation here? Anybody else can certainly, is there?
Can I add a follow up question? So my understanding is there's a six hundred and five thousand from Rough Riders and a ninety-four something thousand. So about seven hundred thousand dollars come from leasing of the facilities from Rough Riders. And then, and then we get, how much in membership fees? How much will we get of the Impact Sports membership fee and the Sports Stable combined membership fee? Don't we get a portion of that?
It changes over time.
Huh?
It changes over time.
I don't think we get it.
It changes every time? What do you mean it changes every time?
Basically, the model shows that forty-seven percent of the total membership revenue is gonna go to Impact Sports and Rough Riders.
Right, so what, what do we get to keep then?
So if there's, it, I mean, in the twenty twenty-one, the model is four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, of which roughly two hundred and twenty thousand is going to Impact Sports and Rough Riders.
So we get two hundred and fifty?
We get fifty-three percent, which is about two hundred and, I'm doing the math in my head, but it's about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand we would get that first year.
So we get two hundred and fifty thousand from our share of the member fees and we get seven hundred thousand from the leasing, the six oh three five fifty at the top left corner and the ninety-five seven sixty. So, so we're getting that, 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 so we're getting a million bucks. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year from leasing it and our share of member fees. And then is there still a deficit, operating deficit?
Yes.
No, I'm asking the question, not, oh, yeah, I want to know what the number is. Okay, let me ask you different. What is the number then there? Okay, so a half a million. So we're relying on nine hundred thousand doll, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from other entities that are using the space and we're gonna spend another five hundred thousand dollars a year out of our general fund.
Just in twenty twenty-one.
That's for changes.
Yeah, it goes down.
Right, as a point of clarity, this deficit or surplus number will change based on, we're taking, we're assuming that we're, you're looking at the first, we're looking at the first year where the facility would be open. And in that first year, the membership revenue is assuming only twenty-five percent of the ultimate members. And then that number will ramp up to full membership by year.
Twenty thirty, twenty twenty-three?
Year seven.
Oh, no, I guess there it goes.
One, two, three, four, five, year six, we will get up to full membership, you know.
Being the twenty-five hundred members?
Two thousand memberships, a little over two thousand memberships.
So then we don't have a loss any longer then, a net operating loss?
Correct.
Yeah, we go to positive. Okay, so, but we still are dependent on the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for lease?
We are still dependent on lease revenues, Rough Rider lease revenues, office lease revenues.
Of about nine hundred thousand dollars.
Seven hundred.
Seven plus the ninety-five?
The straight lease revenues are seven hundred thousand dollars. Then in addition to that, we have total membership revenue.
Okay, membership revenue goes up, but that's where I was getting my nine hundred.
A portion of which, which would go to those particular partners because we're using their, their facilities.
But it's clear to say that there's six hundred and three five fifty and ninety-five seven sixty built all the way through the, that we're dependent on getting from lease revenues from Rough Riders. There's seven hundred thousand dollars there that we're going to be getting every year throughout the whole financial plan.
Right.
From Rough Riders.
And you could categorize it as depend, or, you know, we're dependent upon it or we're guaranteed that revenue, whatever, however you want to categorize.
How can we be guaranteed? But we're expecting.
Because we're entering, ultimately, the board would need to enter into a partnership or lease agreement with, with these particular parties.
Okay, so in the loss, it goes away, so we won't talk about that now. But the one thing that we might have to deal with sometime in the future is the possibility that some or all of that seven hundred thousand not being there.
Any of these variables can change.
Yeah, that's a financial geist answer. The answer is if, if they don't lease the space or don't want to enter, continue the lease, then we could be forced with having to make up that difference someplace else. Right?
Correct.
Because it's in the financial model that we're guaranteed that seven hundred thousand dollars, okay.
Right.
That's all I want to know is, it, this percent sales tax and, and mill levies is dependent on seven hundred thousand dollars from leasing, you know, to make the financials work out, and also two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of member fees. Our portion of the member fees.
Right, and that was in year one and that will go up once we get to full membership by year six.
Okay, then it's even, gets scarier. Okay, all right.
Okay, so Patrick or Matt, can you address Sandy's, back to Sandy's question?
I mean, the way staff is approaching, this is town's facility. In that we, the facility, the goal is to have the facility open and available to residents to use in the prime hours. At the same time, we have the balancing act of wanting to reduce the subsidy for the facility as much as possible, which you do through leasing the space to groups or individuals when appropriate. So I mean, it's an, you know, Patrick's done it with our, our playing field around town and different things like that, where we lease those spaces to, to different groups and generate revenue and, and the, I mean, you, the board could approach this from a financial perspective to where you assume no lease revenue. That would be the ultra conservative way to approach it. We are being pretty conservative in our estimates on what we think revenue can be generated from leasing the space while maintaining available times for residents to use the space. Patrick, I mean, is that fair?
That is accurate and again, in this model, it's assuming that we've already come to a decision on the eight lane lap pool and that there are some, there are some, I think I said four classrooms. So we, we are still making, making some assumptions, but Matt's, Matt's correct.
So, but just flush it out the best you can, that blue box at the end of the, if you call the spreadsheet back up. Okay, so that blue box at the bottom, R S C, Rough Riders, whatever, sports club, Per Luke Taylor. Okay, there. So just flush out classrooms. Thirty-five weeks at forty hours per week. When, what hours of the day are you seeing this being rent leased out? And what classroom amenities remain available in this, whatever scenario you flesh out, to the people of Superior?
So in the classroom scenario, they've requested use between eight AM and four PM. And in the current revised design per the board's direction, this would have to be a portion of the, the large community room that sits along the west side of the building.
Is that, that's Monday through Friday?
That, for thirty-five weeks, that is correct.
So basically, two thirds of the year is during daytime operating hours. A private entity using half of our, hour for divisible rooms in the, the major room there.
That, that is what they've currently requested.
So do that now for basketball.
Same, my, my thought would be is that we push back a little bit and make sure that prime hours of use are available for residents, which would be, if we're following the sports field model, you typically want those available from four o'clock in the afternoon till eight o'clock at night. We'd probably want to make sure that we had the lunch hour available and maybe a little bit in the morning and, and we work with them and they can take it all of the day.
Basketball been modified since we, didn't we get rid of one court entirely?
Yeah, so this one, you'll see that that's reflected there at the one court and that, that number came down.
So when we had two courts in the proposal, one could say one court goes over to them and one court's reserved for us, right? But this is a lot of hours for basketball to be taken out of productivity for the residents of the Town of Superior on the basketball court.
Correct.
In my opinion. So go to the pool. So how many, how many lanes is this?
This is, this is again, assuming that we're sticking with the current pool design at an eight lane pool.
And how many lanes are we going to lease to them?
They're currently asking for eight lanes at forty-two weeks.
Isn't that all it has?
Currently, that's what's in the current design.
So we're gonna lease all the lanes to them for almost the whole year at fifty hours a week?
That's currently what they're requesting.
So when do I get to go?
I think we, we would have to work with this partner group, probably similar to basketball, and make sure that we had prime hours of operation and they would have to become okay with swimming at five thirty in the morning.
So that then, all of this throws that six hundred and three thousand into real state of flux based on these future conversations.
Correct.
So Sandy, you're, I think you're doing a nice job looking at this from the, from the bottoms up. And when I look at it from the top down, I'm, I share your concerns here, right? You're talking six to seven hundred thousand dollars. Let's just assume you're talking, let's just round up a little bit and call it sixty thousand hours a month, two thousand dollars a day. Do I really think, I mean, of cour, so the usage is high because we need two thousand dollars a day in revenue. So of course we need to sell a lot of space to get two thousand dollars in revenue. I just don't, I, I'm struggling having confidence that we're gonna achieve two thousand, which, which is a dependency. Or we're gonna be upside down. Struggling with the level of confidence without the Sports Stable representatives being here that we're gonna see two thousand dollars a day in revenue. I don't know how they're doing over there now, but nobody pays, you could do anything over there for twenty bucks and enjoy a couple hours, right? Whether or not it's skating around, playing basketball, you could drop in and lift weights, you could get a, you know, it's not personalized coaching, but you could probably rent anything over there for twenty bucks for an hour or two. So they're gonna drive another hundred kids or adults or, or users at twenty dollars an hour into our facility three hundred and sixty-five days a year for two thousand dollars a day.
I think that's a great point that you're making, but also go to this point. So are you willing, let's say they could, and that's a big if.
Right, it scares me, right? We're gonna, we need two thousand hours a day to make the numbers work.
So Kevin, I'm gonna put you on the spot. If you, if they could, if they were here today and they said, yeah, we're really cash rich, we can do two thousand bucks a day, no problem. Would we want to do that, given these heavy usages that might deprive our residents of access?
Yeah, I mean, that's my, I mean, the, the most valuable asset we will have, and the classrooms, it's just, there's four categories. You've done a nice job on the categories, by the way. I like how you've done it. The classroom is a commodity. There's gonna be plenty of classroom, but within, I mean, there's a vacant floor across the street from them in the medical office building. I'm sure they could convince, I forget the doctor's name, but either perhaps there's Sheen's. You know, so classrooms are a commodity. I think if we're depending upon revenue from a commodity, that's not a long-term solution. Basketball is unique, the pool is unique, but do we really, I mean, the thing about our, the level of investment we're making in the eight lane pool was ten million dollars and that's a roughly rounded, right? But, you know, it might be as little as eight, somewhere between eight and eleven probably, but it's the lion's share of this. We've got an asset that we're paying eight to eleven million dollars and we're gonna get a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in, in revenue for it? I mean, let's just, the, the math just doesn't work out for me, right? If I'm buying a ten million dollar house and I'm, wanna rent it out, I, I expect a lot more than a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in revenue for it.
Well, I, I think that that was kind of to Sandy's point earlier of, you know, maybe we don't want to commit to a lease now and, and, you know, see, okay, what, what is this actually gonna cost us to build and operate? And then, you know, to the extent that we have this valuable asset, because I, I agree with you, you know, the pool's gonna be, that's the most valuable, unique asset here. We've got a covered pool that'll be, you know, usable by Rock Creek Flyers and families. If we need then to tap into a future revenue source, maybe at that point, we start exploring, okay, do we want to enter into some sort of lease without going forward and actually proactively committing the crown jewel of the whole project to a long-term lease that is going to prevent our residents from actually accessing it when we want them to.
Yeah, I'd, I'd want to see at least, if you got an eight lane pool, I'd want to see at least a lane or two roped off, available for drop-in usage. And the idea that it's available, you know, all eight lanes committed all day, every day, you know, for all but ten weeks out of the year, I'm, I'm not, yeah, I'm not good.
Eleven dollars an hour just is, is.
Per lane.
I know, but it's.
That seems, the eleven dollars an hour seems low to me, but I don't know. But I guess the other piece that concerns me about this is if we commit to Rough Riders, what do we do about the folks who are residents or of either Superior or Louisville? And that would be the Flyers, it would mean Moho swimming. Now, granted, they're building a four lane competitive pool over at Louisville, but I still, I, I don't want to see us lease this out and commit to that and sacrifice our teams who are here. So that's the other piece that concerns me about this.
Right, I mean, I'd imagine the Rough Riders projection that, I mean, it's fifty hours a week for eight lanes. They've got, that's a lot of, and they don't, they don't have, are they gonna have a Rough Riders swim team? Are they, are they the ones that are renting it out to the Rock Creek Flyers and are they renting it out to the Flyers at fifteen dollars an hour per lane? And then we pay them eleven? I mean, I don't know, there's a lot to think about, but, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, we are giving up a lot in our availability of the asset we're building. And yes, we're getting six hundred thousand dollars in revenue, which helps to make the numbers work because it's roughly twenty-five, you know, it's gonna cost us about two point five million dollars a year. And so it's about a quarter of it. And so quarter of the, it's nice to have, right off the bat, you know, forty-five percent of the revenue is gonna come from a tax increase. Twenty-five percent of the revenue would come from a partner tenant. I mean, that's, it's nice, but that partner tenant's gonna have some big demands and are we ready to give up to, to give to those demands?
Well, that's why I said that this is suspect, or not suspect, but we're dependent on the six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars from the Rough Riders. And we should do the financial models, taking that out and not being dependent on that. So I think we've kind of come full circle here, back to where I started from, is that we've got a big chunk of money that we should think about a financial model with it out, not being dependent on, and what it would cost.
In addition to that, I think if the board, which is understand, you know, I can understand the point of view of not wanting to lease space to any particular group. I think we'll need to go back and talk to them because we do need their property to do this facility there. So if that's kind of the position.
So what is the corollary? What is the other side of the equation? So we know what they get in this collaboration. They get this, right? What do we get? What do our residents get that they otherwise would not have access to? Because I thought our residents had full access to everything over there now, right? Can't our residents pay for everything over there now and have access to, like Kevin said, twenty? Can't our residents pay for everything over there now and have access to, like Kevin said, twenty bucks an hour here and whatever, whatever, whatever? So, what incremental, above and beyond what the residents have access to right now, are they going to get with this collaboration? Who knows that answer?
The land, right? The land?
The land.
Isn't the land part of it?
The residents don't get the land.
No, but I mean, it's, it's owned not by the town, right?
Which we gave them.
We gave to them.
But I know, but it's not owned by the town, right? So, that is a contribution.
But I think she's being more daughter or down to the street level.
No, but I mean, that's part of a transaction.
Sure.
Yeah, but street level, what, what do the people get as amenities?
What can I tell my neighbor, because we're doing this, they get fifty hours here and forty hours and whatever and you get what exactly in terms of access to the amenities at the sports stable that they wouldn't have unless we do this? So, Patrick, what's the answer to that?
To your point, they'd get access to the facility probably at, my guess would be a slightly cheaper rate to maybe use the ice.
Golf.
Golf, you know, we've, we've worked with them on a, across the board, twenty-five percent discount on all existing classes, all existing sports programs, things along those lines, and the land.
So, they get, if I heard right, if they're paying twenty bucks now per hour, they only have to pay fifteen bucks an hour, right?
Correct.
Sorta doesn't feel like enough. It feels like this is quite one-sided, especially when you've got a ten million dollar amenity of this swimming pool.
Okay, this might be a great time to take a little break from us talking and let the residents do some talking. So, I'd like to open public comment now and ask people to please limit your comments to three minutes, just so we can allow plenty of time for others to speak. So, please, come on forward, introduce yourself in three minutes, please.
Jack Cheng, five-two A zero Conway. So, real quick to answer Kevin's question, what are they doing with this facility? Basically, my conversation meeting with Gary and then Luke, they specifically want to build this because they wanna host a hundred fifty students. So, maybe that would help clarify what they're gonna do with this. And then, so, and then going to Sandy's question, is there anything that we could pay without doing this and that the residents could get access to their facility? So, for me, I pay six dollars only, drop-in, to access to their basketball court. So, if I could do that, why would I want to do this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have read the town board packet, hard copy regarding tonight's meeting.
Gladys, sorry, couldn't you start with your name, please?
Oh, sorry.
We know you, but.
Gladys Forshi, four oh four South Third Avenue.
Thank you.
I have read the town board packet, hard copy regarding tonight's meeting. I understand that the timeframe, July thirtieth, notify Boulder County Clerk in writing, which is formal action to participate in general election. I have done an open records request, which I still have, that I have not submitted to Phyllis, I have just done the form, regarding tasks completed. It takes three days to get a reply back on the open records request. In, I N. writing is a simple direction. Publication regarding this meeting status is potential, November two thousand eighteen ballot question. Therefore, leaves me as a voter, no written notice to Boulder County Clerk and Recorder regarding formal action to participate in general election has been done. Therefore, this issue is dead for November two thousand eighteen election. July thirtieth, business days are over, business hours are over. Voting hours in an election is seven AM to seven PM. Those hours are over today. So, community service issue in town of Superior is dead because it has not been submitted to Boulder County Clerk.
I think that one needs to be addressed right now.
Yeah, I can respond to that. Phyllis, the town clerk has contacted the Boulder County Clerk's office and made the request and received notification back that they've acknowledged our request and have, are sending over the IGA for the election, so.
Because we are participating anyway.
We have to, because we have a board election.
Right. So, did you understand that, Gladys? We have to participate in this election 'cause we have trustees up and a mayor up.
I understand that, but the July thirtieth date is not there.
It's already been taken care of because we're otherwise participating in the election.
We've notified the county and they've responded to us.
Because of the trustee election, that satisfies that.
Okay, additional public comment?
Good evening, Jim Payne, Superior resident. I have a, just a couple of comments on the survey, just relaying some thoughts from the two thousand fourteen survey, which I was instrumental in leading the team that did that. So, these are really not for discussion unless you want to. I just wanted to throw them out there. First of all, I think you'll find that the research company can identify phone numbers by the exchange, whether they're cell or landline. One concern I have, Sandy, and I guess Sandy might remember this, we spent a lot of time and discussion over the household versus individual issue, whether the survey should be directed at households or individual. And I'm, I understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to get at the potential for the, for the vote ballot on this. But there are a lot of things that come with that and I just suggest that you think those through and discuss them with the research company. What if you get husband and wife on the list? What if one isn't there? Or what if you call someone and they're not there? Do you talk to the spouse? Do you tell them you're not, I mean, you, you just think those things through. The, I'm concerned about the ambiguity in the introduction in the survey. You say, I think it says it's a community center with a pool. You're gonna get some issues there with, with people's perception of what a community center is versus a rec center. This has plagued us in research and discussion of this all the way through. I wouldn't take that lightly. It's not a trivial distinction. I would just discuss that with the survey company. I also suggest, you don't have a lot of demographic questions, but I suggest that where you do, for example, on income and age, that you go back and use the same brackets, the same breaks that we used in the two thousand fourteen survey. Just be interesting to see what that gives you or what you learned from that. Also, are the results gonna be weighted or not? I don't know if you've looked at that, but that's another, another thing we spent a lot of time discussing. And then, one of the things we did was, in the last survey, that we made it available to people who weren't selected after the fact, so they could go in and take the survey. And then, we had the data both ways, clean, without, you know, with our statistical sample and also anyone else who wanted to participate. So, this will give a, give the population, the rest of the people who weren't selected in the sample, the opportunity to take the, take the survey and, and be heard, even if you filtered out of the actual statistical results. And then, those are my comments on the survey. Just one other comment, with the complexity of the partners and we, there's been some discussion, not so much tonight, but in the past, about sensitivity, sensitivity analysis on some of the financial assumptions. But one of the things I suggest is that you need to take the, you know, the old, the old approach of doubling the costs and having the revenues and see what you get. But whatever sensitivity analysis you feel is appropriate, you really need to do it by, I think, by each major partner. So, what happens if, if one partner is wildly successful, overstrips the demand for what they've assumed in, in terms of hours or facility use? And, and then, how, you're ultimately gonna wanna have a plan to say, what do we do? At what point do we give up, you know, Superior residential uses, use in hours if, if you have an imbalance in the way this turns out, so.
Jim, we're over a minute. Okay, thanks. All right, additional public comment?
Hello, Dalton Valet, nine-one-two East Carville Place. I just wanted to offer two points about the survey information, 'cause I've worked on a lot of political campaigns and used phone canvassing and phone surveys in the past. So, first point, I wanna echo Jim's point about being able to decipher if it's a landline or if it's a cellphone number. They'll be able to understand that and be able to pick out, so they will be able to track the information pretty easily. And secondly, just as far as the cost goes for organizing this, it should be relatively inexpensive. A phone banking usually is around two to five cents per phone call. And I would advocate the board in communicating with the National Research Center for this. A lot of people don't tend to do this, but I would actually advocate in our purposes for getting a higher percentage of people actually contacting, giving full information to actually have as a message to residents that they don't pick up the phone, actually leave a message and say, you're able to contact maybe the town of Superior or the National Research Center back at this phone number. People are a lot more likely to actually give more in-depth analysis of the question if you don't leave a message, which a lot of campaigns choose not to do, which personally I think is a mistake. So, that was all I wanted to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Dickerhoff. I live on Mesa Court. And a few things about the survey that I saw already. Boy, with the primaries that are coming up and things like that, I have just been categorically not answering calls and blocking calls. And that's not gonna work to the benefit of this thing. If there's some way that the company that's conducting the surveys can say, I'm from the town of Superior and it shows up on my caller ID, I think we'll get a better response. Because otherwise, it's just gonna get lost in the shuffle of everything else that's going on right now. And the identity with the town of Superior would get my interest. I think it's probably somebody calling to see whether or not I paid my water bill or something. But I would make that recommendation if they can alter how they reach out to us. I also would like to see other people be able to, as was mentioned, complete the survey on their own at some other point. So, those are things. The other one that I always find objectionable is anything regarding my household income. I see where that has no bearing on this at all and it would be an affront to me to be asked that. I might think that, well, jeez, if I make so much money, then I'd be inclined to use the facility. That's totally irrelevant to what we're doing here. So, those are my comments about that. In a larger sense, I look at this and I hear your discussions about this and it doesn't sound like you know how much this thing is gonna cost or what it's gonna get, how many lanes? You know, a basketball court is gonna be good to, for maybe ten people at a time, five on each side. So, I don't really see that as particular value to the citizens of Superior in terms of what we get. You know, Sandy, you were asking that question, what do our residents get? And in combination and competition with Louisville and other places, I don't see in this whole project that we're gonna get very much that I can come home to and say, yeah, I'm proud of this. And if you don't have an idea, as it's evidenced by what you're saying so far, how much the thing is really gonna cost? Why are we even going forward to it and bothering two hundred or four hundred people with phone calls right now? 'Cause I think this is an idea that needs another year of analysis and review. I recognize the opportunity costs of money, but I think we're way ahead of our time in trying to rush this thing and get it on a ballot right now. It doesn't make sense to me at all. You guys can do much better with other things. I depend on you to be able to come up with better projects than this right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lars Morales, nine oh eight Maroon Peak Circle. I'll just strike, I had about three items written down, but I'd just like to echo the gentleman just spoke. I totally agree with what he's saying and I, today talked to a CPA at the Lifetime Fitness and looking at these kind of financials, what he told me made a heck of a lot of sense. We could pretty much subsidize a town, could subsidize our membership over there with this type of financial. It would be pretty easy to do something like that for a good period of time without running into this kind of money out there. But then, what I'd really like to ask y'all is, is anybody, has this come up about using our infrastructure, existing empty infrastructure? And I'll point out the Sports Authority over there, big empty building, the recently vacated Land Rover building, which, in my opinion, with a heck of a lot less money involved, we could turn something like that into a really great sports center, event center, whatever you wanna call it. That's all.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Yes.
Janine Dickerhoff, also on Mesa Court. Just one, I agree with what everybody said too, but you know, it seems like with the huge expansion the Louisville Rec Center is doing. You know, we've been members there for years and we take advantage of their facilities and they're expanding that immensely now. It just seems like it's not the right time, you know, to do this, because I think that, you know, we have access. And I mean, we pay a little bit more than Louisville, yes does, but you know, it's really not that much and we are able to access all those facilities. And I just think with all the questions that are raised, and I did read all fifty-two pages of the comments today, just to see what they said. And you know, and there's a lot of concern in all of those comments about pursuing this. So, I know you guys are gonna take this and, and really delve into it and I appreciate that, but it real, there is a lot of concern, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Lish, one-three-two-six, South Idalia Court. First, I'd really like to say I appreciate the depth of tonight's discussion. I think you guys have done a great job of articulating the risks of this facility. I think the missing piece that we haven't actually hit on yet is whether those risks truly outweigh the benefits of what we're seeing here. As was articulated in our earlier discussion, the success of the facility is fully dependent on hitting the membership targets and the Rough Rider lease revenues. What happens if we have some type of event that puts those into jeopardy? What happens if we have a recession? The pessimistic scenario that was presented in the staff memo where membership numbers are decreased by twenty percent would lead to an annual average operating deficit of ninety-six thousand dollars a year over the ten-year average. That means that we as a town will be subsidizing the community center each and every year. So, we'll basically have a steady drip from the town's coffers to cover this deficit every year. What happens if that recession is so severe that Rough Riders or Impact Support, Impact Sports goes out of business? That puts the additional revenues we were relying on into jeopardy. So, now those drips from the town coffers have gotten a lot bigger and are a lot more frequent. Have they opened up their books to us? Do we know exactly what their financial stability is? Do we feel comfortable relying so heavily on them as a revenue source to actually make this a fiscally responsible decision? There's a lot out there that we don't know. If we're trying to provide an amenity that isn't available to our residents, I would fully understand the desire to take on this risk. But within a reasonable distance, we have Lifetime Fitness, we have Louisville Rec Center, we have Impact Sports, and we have the Boulder Rec Facilities. We have facilities in the nearby region. If we were a for-profit company and we were trying to have a long-term profit motive, maybe we would accept this risk, but that's not what we are. We're stewards of taxpayer dollars. Is it worth it to put taxpayer dollars at risk over this facility? Are we getting enough for that risk? From what I could tell, what we really need to be focusing on is instead of taking on the risks of such a large facility, we need to pull back and look at exactly what the community needs, which from what I've seen in the survey and what I've heard from all the different informational sessions that the town has had, is really the community facets of this community center. So, basically the third floor and, and the meeting space and everything that we've known for years that we really need but don't have. So, my recommendation is that we stop moving forward and focusing on this project, instead focus on a new project that actually addresses the needs and represent a risk tolerance that we as a town can accept. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional? Additional public comment? Yes, sir.
Dan Walkus, 2345 Andrew Drive. I'll keep my comments really short. I just wanted to echo what Jim said. I thought was a great suggestion in terms of letting other people participate in the survey and response, and especially if we could have an online forum. I think a lot of the things you were talking about are the things that you wish you could ask, or you know, we could do things like, how likely would you be to be, pay for a membership or to switch your membership, you know, on a scale of one to five? So it might open up some new options and we should consider doing a web survey in conjunction with the phone survey. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Yes.
Brian Hill, 2110 Kyoto Lane. I'm not sure if, I noticed if the Silver memberships were included in here. I know it was listed, but I didn't see any actual members and any revenues from that. And here, maybe I'm looking at an old one. And I'm wondering if the town invested in this, if, you know, sold bonds for this, how might that affect a municipal broadband investment with a neighboring city down the line? And, let's see. And then I agree with what Mr. Lish said. I hope that we're able to crack open the books of partners in this and really understand what other third-party relationships might be in play and really to kind of know how financially sound they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? I'd like to limit it to each person one time, so. Any other public comment? Okay. All right. With that, we'll circle back to the board for additional discussion. So as we were talking earlier about the, this question of potentially pulling back some of the sports stable, Rough Rider usage, and it sounded like you need to have some additional discussion with them to see, are they kind of at their minimums or is it still a possibility to build it and ramp that up over time with very limited lease commitments? Because I do share the concerns about kind of signing the whole thing over on day one and not having the full use of it. But I do recognize we're going to have, we'll definitely have a lot of extra capacity, but it would be, it would be nice to work into that extra capacity other than have it dictated on day one. So that's, that is a definite question I think we need to get answered.
So I know we've talked about it previously, I think, in a work session, but you know, I think that, you know, we definitely need to understand better the mechanics of what would happen if Rough Riders fails, pulls out, we don't do the deal that we're currently structured for this financial presentation. But you know, the other part of that is, you know, the membership assumptions, and I'd like a little more detail on, you know, how confident are we in those numbers? How do we come up with those numbers? You know, where do they come from? Because to me, you know, the ultimate question is, I think that there are people that will, as long as the price is right, I think we'll be able to lure people away from Louisville to Superior. But I think it'll be difficult to lure people away from Lifetime. I don't, I don't think that those are two equal comparisons. You know, Lifetime spent $20 million on that facility and it shows. And that is my concern. Because if we're basing this on, you know, assumptions that we're going to hit these target numbers and it's not realistic, you know, then the whole house of cards comes falling down. So I'd like a little more information on, you know, how do we come up with that numbers? You know, who came up with them? How do we come up with them? Why are they reasonable? Why does it take a certain amount of time to reach the ramp up and the target that we're?
Yeah. I think Paula and Patrick can both give you, I mean, they've been working on this the most and the longest, and they can give you probably a pretty quick answer to that question. And we're being, trying to be as conservative as we can in our projections going forward. So.
Patrick Hammer, Town Staff. The number was generated through a number of projects, first and foremost, by researching the current usage on the town's two aquatic facilities with some data that was also pulled from participation in program. We also did an extensive amount of work when we were looking at the Lake Shore opportunity on penetration rate of Superior residents who were participating at Lake Shore, as well as reaching out to the City of Louisville for information on Superior usage at the City of Louisville. But in the end, it is, it's a best guess based on the information that we had available to us. And the ramp-up period was really an attempt by staff, to Matt's point, to be a little bit more conservative and realistic, saying that there's no way that in year one or year two of it being open that you're at two, you know, 2,000 people, that that was going to take a series of years to build up to. And also, we tried to factor in current growth or future growth across the street and the town center.
So a couple of things. You know, the data for the people that are using our current, you know, pools right now, you know, that's an interesting data point. However, we're not charging admission for our residents to use those pools. People are already, you know, just paying for that with their property taxes. So I question how, you know, useful that number is. I think it would be interesting to know, you know, what is a reasonable kind of take rate for municipalities kind of similarly situated? Like what is, what is the percentage of Louisville residents that actually belong to Louisville Rec Center and/or frequent it with punch cards? And then similarly in Arvada and in Broomfield, things of that nature. Because right now, we're estimating 15% of our residents are going to be members.
Correct.
That, I mean, I understand you guys are saying that you're trying to be conservative, but that doesn't seem very conservative. That seems pretty high, in my opinion. Because, and again, like this comes back down to that totally non-scientific anecdotal conversation that I had with people. People feel, yeah, we should send this to the voters. Yeah, they would vote for it, but then ultimately when I asked them if they would use it, they wouldn't use it. And I just don't want us to get into a situation where we build something and then nobody's actually using it. And our, you know, figures in terms of membership assumptions turns out not to be conservative enough.
I think Mark had some good questions about the, kind of the revenue model, which could, could use some more baking. And I recognize we're trying to do a lot in a compressed timeline. I think the other thing that I think could use some more baking, could you just drop, could you lose that? So on the, what we're expected to give up, which is, you know, 35 weeks, 40 hours a week of a classroom, all that basketball time, I guess I'm still missing the similar table that says what's the sports stable is supposed to give up. So we are getting, you know, we expect, we're going to give up, we're going to get $700,000 worth of revenue, and for that $700,000, that's what we need to give. We're effectively releasing, somehow typed over it, but about $120,000 worth of our revenue to them for our use, right? Based on the split of revenue, of our use to some of the other facilities, whether or not it's ice time, the legacy Impact Sports, the golf amenity. But I don't see the table that says we're going to get X amount of hours of golf bay time, X amount of hours of ice rink time, X amount of hours of the turf time. And I know it's, it's too big an ask to say, can you go to Luke Taylor and negotiate that in the next week and let's have a similar table for us? And so while it pains me to suggest this, and I want to maybe, but I'm going to volunteer it, be the first person to say it, because the revenue model is not fully baked, because I don't understand the, what we get from the other facilities, because I still think, because I think the questionnaire requires, I think it's great, and I think you guys have done a nice job, but the take, trying to, I'm listening to the board and thinking about the direction that we've given you, and I think you got different direction. I think we could probably get there, but it's a lot of work. And then it's going to be a compressed timeline where we're going to probably pay a premium. I think we were doing this for two reasons, I think. Number one, we have the election and you want to take advantage of the election and the cost of the election. Number two, we heard from the sports stable six months ago that if we wanted to partner with them, the time was now, this year. And if we chose not to partner with them now, this year, that opportunity to partner may not be available next year. I'm not ready personally to give up on an idea to partner with the sports stable and the businesses surrounding the sports table, because I know there's a few in there, Rough Riders, I don't quite understand the economic model. And by the way, I think somebody's raising a good point. If I was, in my day job, if I was partnering with somebody where I had a 25 dependency, 25% dependency upon their revenue in order for my livelihood, I'd be going through some pretty significant due diligence. I'd be under the hood, making sure that they're going to actually be able to pay those bills. So for those reasons, it feels like we should take a breath, to me, and not push this for the November election.
Chris?
I wouldn't go that far yet. Because we, we do have a considerable amount of time into this already. But I would say that we, you know, we continue down the road that we look into this more, we turn over every stone possible. And if we find out at the end of this month, well, the end of August, that we're just not really there, then I would agree with that. I do think that we would be missing a good opportunity. Because I really don't think that we're going to get anything built on its own anywhere else in this town. I don't think this town would ever do that. So if we can't make this work and get a decision by the end of August, I'd say, yeah, let's just move on and, you know, we'll see what happens with the up to 40,000 square feet that we have in the town square. I don't think we'll have a pool, but you know, I do think that there's still an opportunity that we shouldn't give up on this yet. But I do have a couple of questions that I want to find out about. Patrick, most of these will be for you. Does Louisville currently lease space to this magnitude to outside user groups?
I don't know. I'd have to, I could follow up though, in pretty short order.
It would be interesting to note, and I'm not saying that we want to be like Louisville, but I think it's, just as a comparison, are they dependent on groups like this? I get the argument about, you know, what happens if the Rough Riders fail or Impact fails? And I think, you know, what happens if Costco fails? Well, I mean, what happens if anything fails? Then we could be in trouble. So I, if we feel more comfortable, and actually I do agree with looking at their books, if we are going to be dependent on that, but I'm not convinced that we need to be that dependent on it. I think that Luke Taylor and them come back, they have come to us and said, here's what we want, hoping that maybe they'll get half that or two-thirds of that. So I think there's still some more negotiation. What I do want to confirm, what Mr. Chang said, is one of my questions, is why on earth does Rough Riders need so much time on all those amenities? A pool, I mean, we know the Rough Riders as baseball and hockey. So are they going to start a swim team and is that what they need it for?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I can answer that question directly, but my assumption based on that is that they would. They would, they would operate a swim club or a swim lessons.
Okay. Well, that's interesting, because what would that do to the Flyers? Would they be direct competitors of the Flyers? And so a question about the Flyers, how would the Flyers be using this? How would the Flyers approach the town about, if this pool were there, how would they use it?
We haven't had that dialogue, other than that if the pool were built, they would like to use it and rent it on a year-round basis as well.
So they would use it just for training, you think? Or would they use it for maybe some of their meets?
I've always stood by the fact that I don't think even an eight-lane pool in this design would be suitable for any type of meet, in staff's opinion. I think even an eight-lane pool, it would be suitable for training, but, you know, it'd be a little bit tight.
Let me just point, just an odd technicality with Boulder Valley Summer Swim League, you cannot compete. They could train all year round, but they cannot physically compete between, I think, November 15th and April 15th. So, and the kids that are part of, the Flyers will always be a part of BBS, BBS SL, the Boulder Valley Summer Swim League. That's going to be outdoors. That's not going to change. So I think the idea would be they would get some year-round swimmers to train, but it would not be a competitive swim league during the winter season because they are prohibited from doing so by the terms of BBS SL.
Okay. That's good to know. Now, Patrick, when the Flyers are in season, they're training, right?
Correct.
Where do they train?
They're currently at the North Pool.
So they train at the North Pool and they do their meets, their home meets at the North Pool?
Correct.
So is it possible though that they would, and when they train, are we, do we shut the pool down for residents to use it?
Correct.
Okay. So there is a chance that they actually would train in this pool if it was there, and they would relieve some pressure from the North Pool?
During the, yeah, during the summer, when that pool's open, correct.
All right.
Although most of their training is 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and the pool doesn't open until about 10:00 AM, so it's not really.
Yeah, the hours of the North Pool have been adjusted to accommodate swim team use and swim lesson use.
Okay. Was there any discussions with Luke Taylor that if we entered this agreement with them that they, I mean, really, the only other, the amenity that they control that we currently would rent from them is the synthetic turf field? Would they give us prime time or hours in prime time that Superior residents and Superior resident user groups could use the synthetic field?
I've let them know that that would be our expectation.
Okay.
Yep.
Which is valuable in the wintertime.
Correct.
And then, I'm assuming those times are negotiable. We, I don't know how dependent we are, probably not very dependent on the leasing of our fields, our parks, to user groups. It's not that big of a deal. But what would be nice is if some of those user groups would use them during, not during prime time, and use them during some of the other off-hours. So the question is, Rough Riders with a classroom, the basketball court, and what were the others?
Swimming pool.
The pool. Would they, we would have the ability to negotiate that during the days when our kids are in school and our residents are working and all that kind of stuff. Because if it is going to be 100 or 150 athletes that are going to be living in the area and they need it for school space and training and all that kind of stuff, I think that's great if we're using those facilities during times that we absolutely won't be using them. Because then we're really maximizing the use of that and the money that's coming into the town. I do have a concern though, that if it's, especially with the pool, if they're asking for that much time, all eight lanes, that that's actually an issue, that we need to scale that back and at least have a few of the lanes open so that, like the mayor said or somebody said, that if somebody wants to drop in down there, they should have the ability to do that, especially if they're a paying member. But other than that, if we have classroom space that's being used from between the hours of 10 and 3, I think you have to, you have to schedule that around our school hours. So if Monarch gets out at 3:00 or 2:30 or whatever it is, and Monarch K8 and Eldo get out at 3:30, that really has to be available from that point forward for our residents. So if we schedule them from 10 to 3, these are the hours you get. What does that mean as far as income? Maybe it cuts everything in half. Let's look at that, too. But during the prime hours, which to me, the prime hours are first thing in the morning up until about 10, and then 3 o'clock on, those are the hours that we really needed on the weekends. And there's one thing that we, I don't know, it sounds like the board maybe doesn't have the stomach for it, but at one point we were talking about Impact Sports, Cornerstone, Town of Superior and Sports Stable all being partners in this. Right now, this model is that we're paying the bill to have this thing built, and then we're going to lease space to them. Well, is there an interest to have Sports Stable pony up some money off the top of the costs? So maybe our net cost is only $10 million instead of 16 million or 18 million. So is that something that we would entertain doing? Or do we want to just go at this alone? So is that something that we would entertain doing, or do we want to just go at this alone and then try and make it work if we were to move forward with it?
My initial discussions with them is that they were not at all interested in that, in fronting money up front. I think we can go back and ask again.
I think that was, the very, the very first version, this started with them, them fronting the money, but the interest rate was just too high.
It started out, they were going to secure the loan, and that was their participation.
Yeah. So I, certainly not interested in that, but I think that gives us a little more leverage that if they are not interested in, in that alone, that all they want to do is, okay, great, well, here's what we have available. And if they come back and say, well, we're not interested in that, we need these forty hours a week, or fifty hours, or whatever that is, at least we know where we stand, and if we can't make the numbers work on that, okay, we move on.
So Patrick, another thing I'm noticing here is a third of that revenue, two hundred thousand, is for swimming classes, clinics, et cetera. And there's a question mark by the hours. So I'm guessing that's on top of the pool usage at forty-two weeks.
That is correct. That's staff's understanding as well.
Okay, so I mean, that, that just, that's like the rest of the time. I'm not, yeah. Really not getting it now, so. Okay.
I'll throw a couple of things out there. One, on the survey, you do have to ask male versus female question. It's a presumption that, coming at this from a female perspective, nothing particularly equates in this facility to, if I'm representative of the typical female user, and I will couch that with the fact is I'm a very active user of Lifetime, for what that's worth, I don't see the value for me as a female user of this amenity and those things that I consider important for me to commit to. So I do think it's important for male versus female question because we want to reserve the ability to then sort the results of the survey by male and female to see if there is any statistically different response coming from women versus men. Okay, just for that thing. I see the, this entire model as a win for Sports Stable and Impact Sports and a loser for the Town of Superior. On the blue box there, those rates are just so low that they're almost embarrassing to the town. When you, I believe somebody was on to something, when they can lease a lane of pool time for a ten-million-dollar facility at eleven bucks, you can bet that the price they're charging their private clients for private profit is a whole lot more than that eleven bucks. And I'd, I'd extrapolate that to every amenity you've outlined there. So at the top, and I'm, I'm changing here at the top of this spreadsheet, if you, if you go to the revenue line, just for twenty-twenty-one, so can
Sorry about that.
That's fine. Can you include the stuff at the side so people can see what I'm referencing here? So just for twenty-twenty-one, total membership revenue, and I'm going to get to that spreadsheet in a minute. So the revenue coming from membership fees, right, that's that number. Of that, four hundred and sixty-seven, five fifty, on top of giving Impact and Sports Stable a hell of a deal on number of hours and cheap access rates, we're giving them, of the membership fees, in year twenty-twenty-one, half of it, right? So for access, we have now at just slightly higher rates. Somebody said six dollars an hour for basketball court. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but that's pretty darn cheap. So if, if our members inhabit for the, or if our rate is in four bucks an hour, so what? I, I say let the private model work, which is what some of us voted for several years back when Impact Sports won it. I think it was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for a ten-year commitment of us subsidizing. We said, no, if it works privately, you do it privately, Impact Sports, and they've done it, and it, I believe, has worked. So, so let private enterprise fund the private model. Because they're af, they're doing this, they're interested in this because they can make money off this deal. And the way they make money off this deal is taking our cheap access fees, et cetera, and charging more to their private customers than they're paying us, right? There's a profit margin there. We're not about making profits here. We're about providing public service at a shared community cost, right, and breaking even. You know, that's what we're about here. So, again, I see what Sports Stable and Impact Sports get out of this. I don't see what we get out of it. So can you switch to the membership fee spreadsheet?
Sandy, can I just ask a question? On the basketball court, we have that down, it's thirty-seven fifty an hour, right? And that, that's about what they charge for one-third of their synthetic field? And that's, they have a, I don't know if you know it, that they set up a basketball court on the South Third. So it's, I think it's thirty-five dollars an hour is what it would cost you to rent it. So it's about in line with that. Because there, this, that's what they would pay us, correct? Thirty-seven fifty an hour for the use of the basketball court.
So that's what they charge you now?
That's what they're charging for one-third of the field is thirty-five dollars an hour.
To you?
Yeah.
And that's, and I, I rented some basketball courts last year to, and I recall it was about forty bucks for, might have been for ninety minutes, so.
I'm not saying I'm happy about that, I'm just saying in perspective that I think it's about
It's not out of line. I agree.
I didn't call out basketball because of all the numbers on here. At least it was in the thirty-seven, thirty-eight dollar range, which is not in the eleven-dollar range of the pool, and even the classrooms are twenty-five bucks. I see what they're getting. They're saving huge amounts in overhead. They're saving twenty million dollars in overhead to have us build this thing, right? And they're paying us an hourly fee. I think they're getting a, a really good deal. I don't think we're getting a really good deal. But if we go to membership fees, okay, so right now, I'll just use my, myself as an example. My family rate at Lifetime for full facilities of basketball courts, weight rooms, indoor pool, outdoor pool, saunas, all this kind of stuff, is one fifty a month, right, for my husband and me. So that compares, I believe, to, what's the family rate here for the gold? I, I would compare it sort of to the gold. It's one seventy-nine without the turf, right? And two seventy-nine with the, oh, with the ice, yeah. Let's just use the one seventy-nine for comparison purposes. For all Lifetime offers, which is a whole spectrum of classes that are free to me, pool, indoor, outdoor, saunas, however, hundred and some odd thousand square feet of indoor amenities, plus three tennis courts on top, we're going to charge one seventy-nine to me, and I only pay one fifty right now for Lifetime. So I think these membership numbers are, are way overwrought, overstated here.
You'd actually be at the two, two seventy-nine number.
No, well, that's for, that's for ice access, too, right?
Yeah, the, if you remember, the board had asked us to eliminate the silver membership, which is why you don't see any numbers reflected in there. There was a comment that turf wasn't.
I'm sorry, but did you say the one fif, it was a hundred and fifty for family at Lifetime?
It's hun, yeah, it's, it's, it's a hundred and fifty for a couple. I don't know at Lifetime how a family increment, I'm sure somebody in the audience belongs as a family. Two twenty?
Something like that.
Okay. But my rate is one fifty. And with a hundred percent satisfaction, I might add, I'm, I'm delighted with, Kevin, you delighted with Lifetime? Those of us who belong to Lifetime, don't we have a high satisfaction rate?
I haven't been in a month.
Okay, well, shame on you.
But your family's in life.
Yeah, but, yeah. Kevin, I mean, Mark, say that again on, on mic.
My wife loves it.
Okay. And, you know, I'm not the easiest customer on the street there, and I love it, so come on. Anyway, I'm just saying here, now, somebody here in the room was a, a long-time member of, of Louisville Rec. Why do you pay a month as an individual at Louisville Rec? Just shout it out.
Silver sneakers, free.
Well, if you're not a silver sneaker, how much you pay?
Their website says thirty-five dollars for a single individual.
Resident or non-resident?
Resident. Non-resident would be fifty dollars.
Okay, but, but look up there, the individual resident rate at our lowest level is right at that amount. So who are we thinking are going to join this facility that is less amenitized, is that a word? Than the competition out there? So that's why I share in the concern of Mark that these membership numbers are, are suspect.
We increased these numbers based on board comments? Is that correct?
They, they fluctuated a bit. We had them hire and receive direction from the board to make them more in line with municipal rates.
But you see my point. If they were higher, my point's even better made.
But can we just, to put that in perspective again, though, the, so the bronze rate is community center and Impact Sports. What does that mean, Impact Sports? What do you get?
Existing Impact facilities.
So they're classes?
Correct. Classes, classes would, as, as you would see in any rec center, will be additional to your baseline membership.
Okay, so, so go to the next one, then. It says, so silver, that's, so the individual member there is eighty-nine dollars for silver?
And we, and we received direction to remove that, citing that the turf wasn't a significant added value.
Okay, but, but the, the description for Impact is different. It says, community center and all Impact Sports. Does that mean, is that different, or am I just?
No, that's, I apologize, that's a typo on, on our part, including the word all.
Are you telling us we should delete that entire row at silver?
I, I tend to like to keep that row in there for these very conversations in case that row ever needs to come back.
But can you at least line through them to say they're not a current option on the table?
You can highlight it or something.
So these are the two, the split on the table.
Then the goal, the only difference between that and the other one is the full facility. So you get ice, discounted rates on ice, and, and discount, okay. And you're sure that you don't get access to CrossFit classes at Impact? Because they do have memberships that you pay.
That is our current understanding from the partner groups, is those would be extra.
And that's one of the, the reasons why it's difficult to compare, you know, apples to apples here. You know, because if we're looking at Lifetime, in Lifetime, you're getting all the classes that Lifetime offers with your membership, right? And, you know.
Which is probably, probably seventy a week, by the way.
To trusty Laces's point, you know, we, as you guys know, staff keeps in constant contact with Lifetime Fitness, and they in no way view this as competition. But I, you know, going back to the April, going back to the April cover memo, you know, there are, I believe we listed six, five or six amenities within the six-mile radius that would count as competition. I think that is something that's come up that is a relevant point to make is, you know, the, the facility membership numbers. You know, if this were the only game in town, those numbers, you know, we, we are doing our best to make some assumptions with the information that we have available, given the timeframe that we have. There is competition in the area that you factor for. Much like when we were talking about the Town fifteen parcel, we discussed at that time creating own internal competition in town and whether it's appropriate to add a fitness facility in town, run by the town, when you already have a fitness facility in the downtown area. So competition is a relevant point to discussion.
Can I ask a question on the membership numbers? Way over on the side, it's, there was a, a point that it said, Per Luke, currently five hundred members who were joined, and six hundred members who would join at the silver level, or at the gold level. So those eleven hundred, are they counted in the twenty-six hundred? So you're talking fifteen hundred would come out. But, again, eleven hundred of the active members using the club would be people who came in through Impact. I mean, it, when you say that, does Luke, or I don't want to be disrespectful, but is the Sports Stable saying that they have eleven hundred people who would be coming in and using our facility?
That is correct. We've been told by the partner groups that their existing membership base would convert over to this model.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear if that was indeed in that number.
Paying members.
Paying members.
Paying members, the eleven hundred.
But what does a full privileged member at Sports Stable pay Sports Stable right now?
I, I'd have to look at the, their membership rates. I don't have them off the top of my head. I think they're listed on their website.
So I thought Kevin brought up a good point before. And I think superior residents really want a rec center. It's something that we've heard about for years. But it's really easy to want things, and the devil's going to be in the details as to like how we're going to actually pay for them and make it happen. And I think that, you know, the model that we've got right now, I think we're too heavily dependent on third parties. Not sure we can compete with Lifetime or Louisville. And, you know, we haven't really talked about the design of the, of the structure tonight. But I think that that might be one of the problems here, that I think we're trying to squeeze too many things into this facility. And I previously said that I think something is better than nothing, and I, I believe that if we don't partner with a third party, there's no chance that Superior will ever build a standalone rec center. We just, we're too small of a town. We've got too few residents. We've got too small of a tax base to make this, make this work. But, you know, we've heard a lot from, from the community, and the thing that really concerns me is what we're hearing from the community, at least in my opinion, is mostly negative. I've heard a lot of concerns. I haven't heard the, you know, overwhelming support for, yes, we should definitely do this. This is the right move for the town. You know, I want our community to be behind this one hundred percent. I want this board to be behind this one hundred percent. And right now, I just, I don't think we're there, and I don't think that we're going to get there in the next month. You know, while I've said in the past that I think it's really important to give the voters a say, and I really, you know, this is where I'm struggling, because I, I really value sending questions like this to the voters, and I don't like the idea of taking away something that the community has been asking for forever. And to take that question away from the voters, I think is, and it's a difficult thing to do. I think it's some, this is the type of decision that I think needs to go to the voters ultimately. So, you know, I'm having a hard time reconciling that. But I just don't think that we're going to get this proposal in any shape that we're all going to feel comfortable sending it to the voters within the next month. And, you know, I don't know whether or not, if we send this to the voters, whether it looks like this or something slightly different, if it'll pass or if it'll fail. But, you know, as it's currently structured, I'm more concerned that it'll pass. And that's the thing that really kind of terrifies me about this entire proposal, because, you know, originally, Sandy raised the issue that, you know, maybe we should pump brakes and, and look at this for twenty-nineteen instead of twenty-eighteen. We're trying to do this too quickly. And I thought that, you know, we had spent the time, this was kind of a unique situation that, and I think it was, it was totally appropriate for us to, to explore the lakeshore opportunity when that landed in our laps. And I'm glad we did that. And, you know, this opportunity arose in, in a kind of a unique way, and I'm glad that we're exploring it. I just don't think that we're going to get to the point where we want to be in the time that we need to get it there. And so I, I'm going to echo Kevin's point, and I think we should pump, pump the brakes, get this right. Because I'm, I'm more concerned that we're going to send this to the voters, because that's the right thing to do. The voters are going to vote for it because The voters are going to vote for it, because we want to be good neighbors, and we want to support our town, and we want to build something. And then ultimately, we're not going to have success, because people aren't going to actually use this facility enough to support it, and then we're going to have, you know, an albatross weighing us down. So, I think we pump the brakes personally.
I want to say I really appreciate all of the time that staff has spent on this, putting these numbers together, complying with our requests to change things and keep changing things and trying to make this work. I continue to believe that some kind of partnership is the way forward with this. I don't know that this, I'm not ready to say this is the end of it, but I'm, I think this meeting has been a real eye-opener for a lot of us, and, and really myself in particular, in that the, the amount of usage that the, the partner groups would be needing in order to generate the revenue, which makes it somewhat work for us, that, I, I guess I had just really not fully understood that until now, and, and I just, I can't personally support moving forward under this scenario. I think we could go back to them and ask, you know, can you do this, or can you do that? But I don't think we're going to get a way forward in a week or a month on, on those questions. And, so I'm going to, I'm going to echo the comments of the others that, you know, we, I, Chris, I, I agree with you that I'd like to keep, I'd like to hear the results of the phone survey. I'd like to keep this momentum moving forward, but I just don't think in a month from now we're going to be prepared to send something to the board.
No, I'm, I'm actually not going to disagree with you, Chris, guys. I, I think that what we're hearing here is, you know, it's disappointing, but I think that, you know, I, I think if we, if we stop now, that it's going to die with them. They'll, they'll move forward and they'll do their own thing, and that's, that's great. But what I would challenge the board with is that, let's start planning what that 40,000 square feet could look like in the town square. And let's, let's, I mean, we, this board and the previous board has a habit of having these great ideas and saying we're going to get on these things and we're going to do it, and then we keep putting it off, and we put it off, and, and we just don't end up doing it. But that 40,000 square foot opportunity is going to come around sooner than we think, probably not for three years, but that three years is going to come up quickly. So I say that we get on that now and really start planning what that up to 40,000 square feet could look like. But I, I agree, and I'm glad we had this meeting, but I, I think that it's, it's time to pull the plug on it.
I think there's too many questions, and I know many of the residents have said that, there are just too many questions, that we only have a short amount of time to figure them out, a month can't do it. We do need to move on, and not move on to this November's election, but a future one. And the 40,000, I am, up to 40,000 square feet committed, community center, where do we build it or not? We need to resolve that. And that's not going to be resolved by some of us, but it'll be resolved by the future board here that's coming up this fall.
And we'll be sitting out there with these folks saying the same things.
But, but I think when, the only comment I want to make about that is that we're going to get a concept plan, I believe, from Ranch Capital, RC Superior, about what they want to do with blocks six through 11, which surround Main Street, primarily all residential is what they've said that they're planning for that. Primarily all residential is what they said they're planning for that. And we, when we get that, I'll be curious to see how we might, or how we ask them to fit in some kind of a facility that's already been committed to us, and we've committed to them to build longer.
But I don't, it can't be misconstrued that we're committing to 40,000. We, we can commit to 500 square feet if we want, or up to 40,000. So nobody should get the wrong idea that we, we're committed to 40,000 square feet, because that's not the case.
Okay.
Would you like us to work on a press release that you guys can review and maybe get out to the public, letting them know?
Yes.
So we'll work on that and send it around for your review and comment, and then get it out.
Okay.
Just to follow up on these gentlemen here, and previous comments numerous times, can we, as a board, agree that, that this community center project in the, off the Plaza, in the Ranch Capital, should go back to Prostack? That they should take it on as an active project, starting with their 2019 work plan? So that it doesn't go, doesn't just be, because we lost a year or a year and a half.
I honestly almost think that we need, because I think, I really do think that that could happen, that 40,000 square feet or 30,000, and it could be something really nice and really special. And I almost think that we should establish maybe an entirely separate committee that's just focused on that.
A working committee, a task force.
So we don't get it... We don't get it all wrapped up in what was and wasn't. I mean, we can maintain the history and bring it forward and use it appropriately, but I think it is a, start a new, new look at this.
Start a new effort. Let's start it immediately, so that momentum's not lost, and we... Okay.
And we still have Parks 1 and 2 that we've got to figure out how we're going to get in place. So there's still lots to do.
Well, one thing that, when you do Parks 1 and 2, originally there was in the developers' agreement, I think maybe it was more likely in the financing agreement, but there's question, ambiguity whether it got thrown out or not, was that when the blocks along a park area were developed, then the parks need to be built, too. So, we need to use that as leverage as we go forward, that if they're going to build six through 11 out, that's right along where Parks 1 and 2 would go.
That was actually their assurance, that when contiguous space develop, the parks get developed.
Right. It wasn't a development agreement.
Okay. All right, just for also scheduling purposes, we've got a couple more of these meetings on the schedule that we're going to strike for the next couple of Mondays. So, back, so we'll be back for the regular meeting in August, 13th in August, or 13th of August for our next meeting. Okay, anything further?
Good meeting.
All right, good meeting. Thanks for everyone for coming. Appreciate it. All right, we're adjourned.